Thank you, everyone. The brief break. So we're gonna hand it over now to, yeah, Disc Golf Association to Jared Mattson. So all yours, Jared.
Thank you. Hello there. My name is Jared Mattson. I'm the president of the Hinton Disc Golf Association. I'm gonna give you a little snap thought of what we've gone through this year and what our goals are for the future. So really what we're trying to do is we want to continually grow Disc Golf as a sport in in Hinton and the community. It's a very accessible, very inexpensive activity that's appropriate for a very, very diverse clientele. People of all ages enjoy Disc Golf. It's a it's a really great way to get outside, you know? So we've had a couple of successes over the last, over the last twelve months. I can say that we've seen our course be used by multiple local groups in town for team building activities. We've had several groups over the summer, the Discovery Camp, Kids, Kids Clubs. I've taken many groups out on tours there and it's a we've seen like an increase in the volume of traffic that we get at the courses. Cause I'm there every day and sometimes I have to wait to throw. So it's, it's getting a lot of use. Some of the things we did this year where we tried to improve our walking trails along between holes. So we spent a lot of time covering the trails with mulch to make it better accessible for for anybody, people with strollers, people with carts and just a little easier on the knees. And if you're like me and if you run out of breath every three hundred feet, we put a new bench at every tee box. So you can throw a hole, take a break, throw another hole and take a break. So we're just kind of improving the accessibility of the course. One of the highlights of the Hinton Disc Golf Association, the course we have in town is that we've got our Wicked Woods Tournament. This year was our third annual Wicked Woods and it was once again very highly received where we had professional and amateur players from across Alberta and British Columbia. Some of them traveled from Vancouver, Grand Prairie, Edmonton and several local players as well. This generated a lot of sponsorship from local businesses to get prizes, packages and prize support. And the feedback we get from our tournaments is overwhelmingly positive. As they know that our course is a very challenging, very challenging but well-built and well-designed, well-designed course. And I just wanted to put out a big thank you to our members Tracy St. Jean and Charles Gobio. They were instrumental on putting such a great, on a great tournament and making and making the Hinton Disc Golf Association look really, really good. We also continue to run our league night. This has been our third league and we get runs from April twenty eighth to September seventh. It's a twenty week league that we run and we get roughly twenty, twenty-five players signed up of all different levels that meet weekly and just it's a great way for people to meet new up, meet new people, to improve your game, to improve your skills and just a very affordable affordable way to have a, kind of get out there. It legally costs twenty-five dollars to join. So it's a, it's really affordable for people. And we're hoping for next year that to look at more league sponsors from, from businesses to maybe increase our prize pool and encourage more people to sign up. Our course rating, it gets courses, uh, all Disc Golf courses get rated online by the players. They can evaluate it. Our course rating is actually increased from last year from a four point five to a four point six out of five. So we are actually, we have one of the top rated courses in all of Western Canada. And it's all essentially entirely volunteer run. So we're really, really proud of what we've been able to do there. And I think our, our rating and our high reputation reflects that. So some of the challenges that we've got, I think are many of the same challenges that a lot of volunteer organizations have and it's just those nonprofits, like we struggle to get a lot of volunteers. So the course itself is, it's in the woods. It, you know, it involves clearing trees, it involves clearing brush, raking, shoveling, all those sorts of things. It's a lot of manual labor that's done by a very small amount of people. And so our challenge is always trying to find ways to, to increase our volunteer base to help maintain the course. So we had our, our budget of last, this is our last year's operating budget. Um, a snapshot of this is kind of what I want to sort of draw your attention to. Okay.
That's okay. We have it here.
Oh yeah, just a little snapshot with our of our budget. Our operating expenses are pretty, uh, they're free. Pretty basic. We have to cover insurance for the course. We've got some administration fees that need to be covered. And mainly the majority of the, of the funds that we get from our operating budget from the town go towards our insurance and course maintenance. We have money to cover our insurance and we were able to cut the grass. Have a company cut out, come out with a big skid steer and a big mower. It's a lot to do. They'll cut the grass. And help us maintain the course. We've also got some expenses that include marketing and league expenses and payments for that. So our total operating expenses for this year were six thousand three hundred two dollars and forty-four cents. Our operating, what we get for our operating budget from the town is five thousand one hundred fifty dollars and thirty cents. So we burned through all that and the remainder of our funds come from memberships that we get from the community and we get a couple of, we have businesses to help sponsor the course as well. Now, so really where we are right now is just we would like to maintain our current town agreement, but we've got they get right now. It's working pretty well for us and we're still kind of sort of in our growing phases. So what we have right now, I think we're able to, we're able to maintain the course to a satisfactory level. Yeah, we do get lots of sponsorships and grants from local businesses. That accounts for a lot of our funding and we sell sponsorships for five hundred dollars, which are on a three-year cycle. So a business can sponsor a, a bench on one of the holes and will put one of their signs there and that'll be up to three years. Or they can have their sticker on a basket and they get to choose what it is. And so using all of, using sponsorships and grants, we were able to purchase a C can to help us store some of our equipment. So that was done using community grant funds. And some plans we've got for the future is we're still looking for more volunteers. We just keep wanting to expand as much as we can while still being able to maintain what we've got. We would like to be able to expand to accommodate another nine baskets or another nine holes on the course. It would be nice. We were looking into potentially getting a bathroom installed in the parking lot. Cause the, the location of the course is right across from the bike park. The nearest washroom is at the bike park. And it's kind of the equivalent to needing to go to the washroom in McDonald's, but having to go to Canadian Tire to use stuff. So it's a bit of a walk. So we're looking into that. And we hopefully want to replace our wooden tee boxes with concrete. So we'll look for some sponsorships to help us with that. And so I gotta welcome any questions and feedback.
Excellent. Thank you, Jared. Counsel, any questions for Hinton, go, Hinton Golf, Disc Golf Association? Uh, Counsel Taylor?
Jared, I like what you do for the town and your group does for the town. The bang for the buck is, is pretty good. That amount, five thousand one hundred, does that cover operating and capital? That we give you?
Uh, no, we've got another, we've got another amount of capital set aside. I think it's another, it's like another five thousand dollars for capital budget as well. The five thousand one on one hundred fifteen, thirty, five thousand one hundred fifty dollars and thirty cents is just our operating budget.
Okay, thank you.
Um, yeah, you know, what, what you guys bring to our community and the amount of volunteers, you know, and I've also seen it named quite often out there, but Tracy St. John, I guess competes in various different tournaments as well and does very well for our community. So that's great. Um, I guess just a quick question is because it is growing popular and you have one league night. Has, has the board ever entertained doing other league nights similar to other golf, say golf courses, but having industrial league or having women's night and things, having separately leads to pull in possibly more revenue potentially. Uh, where maybe they don't want to be part of that league on that night, but another night might be, has, has the board ever considered that to, to look at more revenue streams potentially?
I think we were focused on running one league successfully. It's still pretty new. It's only three years old. So once we've demonstrated that we can run one league very successfully, then it expands more. But then it also does take another volunteer to run that. So no one's getting, no one's getting paid.
And I guess that's where, cause incentivizing people to volunteer is tough. I know that in a lot of organizations, you know, and I guess maybe that's where potentially having more revenue might be able to give you some other options for incentivizing. I don't know. I'm just wondering if that's, because it is such a growing sport, you know, when we're seeing more and more people both in the community, outside of the community. You know, it's right up there with pickleball, getting more and more to you, right? So.
Yeah, potential there to have a youth league or a doubles league or a mixed league. There's all sorts of opportunity there.
So just to expand on that, do you also like have strategic plan? Like if we, if you were to see as a group, what is strategically you're looking at next five, ten years potentially, uh, how that will look? And I know I saw some things here. You want nine more baskets, you want concrete, but is that ever entertained at your group's level?
Yes, but kind of on a preliminary level. It's hasn't been dealt in too deeply quite yet. We had a little bit of a changeover of our executive over for the last year. So several of our new executive members just joined up over the last couple of months. So we're still kind of getting their feet under us and are seeing if we're all on the same page there. Excellent. Okay. Thank you, Jared. Uh, Counsel Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jared, thank you so much for your presentation. First question, um, do you apply to the community grant process for any monies to assist you in your wants?
Yes, the, the, the association has applied for that in the past. And that leave that was one way that we got our kiosk at the course. And ours, I believe we got our C can through that as well. So it has been used and, uh, we'll look forward for future projects as well.
And just one more brief comment. Jared, my daughter and her husband from B C, they play courses all over Canada. And you're selling yourself short. She said it's the best one she's ever been on. So she'd give you a five out of five. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So, okay, counsel, any more questions? For the association? Okay. Thank you very much, Jared, for coming and presenting and look forward to next year. And I'm gonna see you much. You're welcome. Hey, everybody. So we have one more delegation here, Wild Mountain Music Festival. Um, they're coming. So we don't rob to.
I hope. Well, where would you like us? Is this chair?
Absolutely. That's fine. We'll share the circle.
Excellent. So neither one of you are Rob. So if you could just go ahead and please introduce yourselves for the Wild Mountain Music Festival?
Uh, my name's Barb Marchand and I am the vice chair of Wild Mountain Music Society. And involved in many things with the music festival.
And my name is Harry Ernestson and I also am a part of Wild Mountain Music Festival. I'm the director and I, my general area of responsibility is taste.
Okay. All right. So I'll hand it over to you to present, uh, the well musics.
We are, uh, we're filling in for Rob who has been doing this for a bit. Um, and so we're kind of called in at the last minute. So uh, bear with me as we try to solve the trouble through this. Um, so one of the questions we kind of going through the questions that were sent to us and we're just kind of kind of wrap around that. Um, our purpose for the festival obviously is to bring music to Hinton, but um, music festivals and the arts in general, and Harry can speak to this as well, are important community filters. Um, and we look at it as something that is, is for our community of Hinton. Um, it's, it's very much funded by the community of Hinton through our in-kind and our sponsorship donations. Um, and I think it really brings our community together. I sometimes sort of joke that we just put on a party for ourselves. And in a way, that's kind of what happens because we just, we enjoy, you know, putting it together. Uh, we get a lot of volunteers. We get a lot of people from Hinton that come out and spend, you know, a couple of weeks out there getting everything ready and, and setting it up. So I think it's more than just a music festival. I think it's a community event in terms of our purpose. Um, some of our successes. So when, um, I joined the board and I think we were about the same time, correct? If I'm wrong, um, one of the things that we felt we needed to work on was really putting together a framework for this, the festival. Um, setting up a legacy, if you will, that, uh, if you know, something happened to the, the people that were on the board that other people could step in and kind of follow what we had set up. And that's something that we've really been working on over the last four years is kind of how we set up our site, uh, who does what, what jobs go to which person. So we've got a really good framework at this point that are, as a result, our festival is very well-run. Um, we've been to other festivals, a little bit of our members have been to other festivals that were a little more chaotic in their organization. So we've really tried to work hard to minimize that and to have things really set up well. So that's been a definite success. I would also suggest that, uh, one of our successes is the number of volunteers, number of sponsorship and number in kind of nations that we get from the town in itself. Um, really speaks to the amount that uh, the town supports us and the business people in our town appreciate us. Um, some of our issues this year, um, are reefer. So reefer is our cold storage for, um, cakes and other ice and things like that. Um, it, I think it's quite old.
Yeah, it's for all intents and purposes has failed. So we need to, to source something different for refrigeration.
So, yeah, it's, it was old, old and it's decided that was its last festival. Um, and we also getting generators and getting the necessary sort of generator and power infrastructure that we need out there. Sometimes it's challenged depending on um, who, uh, what businesses are in town and what they have available and things like that. Um, the one that we got last year, the big one that we used for all our music has, uh, that company has actually left Hinton or will be leaving Hinton in October is my understanding. Um, so we will be looking for someone else to replace that. So getting power out there and building our infrastructure can be a challenge. Um, so far, knock wood, last few years, it kind of really did weather. That's always, it can always be a challenge for us as well. Um, and looking at sort of an overview of our, it's financial from the last year. So roughly with our, um, revenue, we brought in two hundred and seventy-three thousand nine hundred and one eighty-five cents. Um, that does not include our in-kind. It does include our sponsorship. So from within the town itself, we managed to come up with uh, sorry, fifty-five thousand two hundred and seventy dollars in donations. And we, um, had our in-kind were seventy-one thousand three hundred and ninety. So basically in kind of things when they lend us a double lender, lend us a generator, right? Those are all expenses that we would have had. Um, which puts us in about three hundred and forty-three thousand dollars was our total, uh, revenue. We, uh, did sell a hundred and thirty-three thousand nine hundred and eleven dollars worth of tickets. We also give tickets for the sponsorship. So depending on the allow, amount of money that you sponsor, um, you get a certain number of tickets. So many, I think we were about two hundred where tickets were. About two hundred were given to the people that sponsored us. So that's kind of how we kind of work things. Um, and then we are a, a completely one hundred percent volunteer run. Um, and so we do kind of do some computing of those kinds of things in terms of revenue as well and what that looks like for us. So we had just under two hundred volunteers. Um, for people that are just coming to the festival, that looks like twelve hours of volunteer time. If they come before, it's a little bit more. For us, people that are on the board, it's anywhere from, I think I'm up about four hundred hours. Uh, I know Rob is up there probably over five hundred hours. Like there's, there's some board members that put in and some volunteers, some, some coordinators that put in a lot of time. So I consider that a revenue as well. Um, our expenses in the last year were two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, seven hundred, sorry, two hundred and forty-seven, seven hundred and five.
Two sixty-five.
Oh, two sixty-five. Oh, yeah. Sorry. It's two sixty-five. Uh, and so we are left at the end of it with nine thousand, sorry, nine thousand two hundred and fifty-nine dollars, eighty-three cents is what our um, surplus would be at the end of everything. Um, and our proposed for two thousand and twenty-four, we're looking between three hundred and forty thousand and three hundred and fifty thousand for our operating budget. That would include approximately one hundred and thirty thousand for vans alone. Um, they are obviously the largest expense. Um, fuel is up there, uh, for running all the generators. Um, the sound, the, the production sound that we get, uh, from, it's a place in, in the city. We don't have anything to do to that. That's like in the twenty-five thousand dollar range. So sort of some of our bigger expenses that we have. Um, and so our anticipated budget would be somewhere in that same area. We do try to book, uh, and I would say out of the twenty-one vans we had last year, I was trying to do a count. I think we had seventeen that were from Alberta, directly from Alberta. Um, and we had one from Montreal, another one from Ontario, uh, from Manitoba. So we are bringing in Canadian and really supporting the Canadian music scene and specifically the Alberta music scene. Would you say?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and basically what we're looking for from the town is sixty-five hundred dollars plus the use of the stage for three years. And so that would be the town stage that you have. And the equipment that goes with that. I think there's some risers that, uh, are addition to that and the sound system that goes with that staging. It's kind of all.
Okay.
That's it?
That's it. Okay. Counsel, any questions for, uh, Wild Music Fest- Festival? Counsel Taylor?
Three. Three questions, one simple. How much did we give you last year?
How much did we make the year before?
No, this year, this year.
How much did we give you last year from the town?
Twenty, twenty-three.
Yeah.
Yeah, twenty, hang on for a second. Um, Grant, uh, you have five thousand three hundred and, sorry, five thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and forty cents and you held that uh, one thousand three hundred and nine sixty cents. So we haven't received the whole amount.
Was it sixty-five?
So sixty-five hundred.
So that was from the community grant program?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Counsel Taylor?
Yeah. What's the economic benefit to Hinton? And how many out of town guests do you bring in?
Uh, okay. So, um, we, we estimate that we are bringing in about a million dollars worth of revenue to this, to the hotel, to restaurants, to, um, uh, grocery stores, to liquor stores, uh, coming into the town. Um, we did a survey last year and kind of tried to find out who was coming in from out of town. Um, and we're estimating about thirty percent of our people come from out of town. A lot of people from Hinton support the festival directly. Um, but, uh, we found that yeah, that's, that's kind of our estimate. And that includes like the amount of money that we personally like our vans, because we do put up, uh, people in the hotels in our town. Uh, and I can tell you that that's one of the expenses that's listed on my list here. You see her?
Seventeen, just twenty-eight thousand.
Eighteen thousand, just for our own van, the van people that come in, we have to book rooms for them. Um, and then on our survey, we asked like how much money estimated they'd spent and we kind of made a estimate from that.
That was thirty percent of how many people? I'm sorry?
Uh, what, what, we're, we're, yeah, it was our total, um, close to a thousand.
Yeah, about a thousand, so.
Thank you. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Counsel Sashik.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. We follow up to Counsel Taylor's question that sixty-five hundred from here, yeah, program. But was there not also some contribution from Council's contingency part that went well enough in the music festival?
From administration, thank you. The year before there was funding from council contingency, I believe, in twenty twenty-three, however, there was not. And the, um, festival did pay for the stage this year. They were funded sixteen, three hundred.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So also the follow-up and then Counsel Taylor. So what you're asking for a council this year is to have a budgeted item for, uh, for, for the Wild Music Festival at the sixty-five hundred and the stage for three year in an agreement. Okay.
Yes.
So is, is administration prepared to bring that to our twenty twenty-four budget discussions?
I'll refer to Mr. You. Thank you, through the chair, the rest of, uh, committee. Yes, that's the plan that we've got, uh, forming up now with budget.
Okay. And if I can follow up there, I'm assuming going through the civic agency policy and that they fit and, and potentially look at, you know, future years like other civic agencies?
Through the chair, through the rest of the committee, exactly that. So the earlier in the year, we did receive the, some of the financial statements and other requirements for meeting the civic agency, uh, policy. Yeah.
Excellent. Excellent.
Uh, one more college on that as well. I mean, uh, eh, the town agent would also then rightly earn our, our gratitude. One of the things that happened last year is we were contacted to provide tents for the candidates, the celebration. That's certainly an area where we could cooperate. We could provide that. Um, and the idea that our tents and that sort of infrastructure being made available for any, uh, any, uh, town of Hinton ventures would certainly be something that we would would be willing to offer. So it's, you know, and, uh, we, we also offered, we have these lovely pallet bars that we also supplied for the candidate celebration and, and a number of tables. And so I and we, we weren't happy that to make all those sorts of things available for, for, for the community as well. I mean, we do see ourselves as a part of the community and, uh, and, uh, and ways in which we as a volunteer organization could assist uh, in just the enhancement of the community is, is certainly something we're, we're alive to and willing to participate in. Uh, there is one more thing that, I mean, when we talk about just back up, just in addition, some of the parts that uh, we, uh, we do look to encourage, uh, uh, the arts in a variety of ways. Our, our select venue is, is music. But, uh, we have the school rock, uh, for example, last year they were invited to perform on, this is Sunday morning.
Uh, Saturday.
Saturday morning. And so we had, uh, my goodness.
Seven bands between the area college and, uh, Jared Redden. Um, and probably wanna, I didn't count how many kids, but most bands had four. So there was, it was, and we allowed the parents to come in for free. We also offered if they wanted to come and stay for the day, we offered them a discounted ticket price, uh, to try to encourage them to stay and stay with their kids. And some of them took us up on that.
So it became an opportunity for children to explore, uh, their artistic side. They've been learning to play musical instruments and, and we provided, provided a venue for them. Uh, it was really exciting for them and, and, and it was just a lot of fun for everyone to watch that and, and enjoy that. Uh, you know, when, uh, when Brian Lembert was, was our president as well, he organized a number of competitions where people could, uh, could, uh, different bands could take part and they were able to, uh, secure an opportunity to, to open it, uh, the band they got some time in a, in a, uh, recording studio thing. So it was again, an opportunity where we can to create for uh, for, I mean, up and coming musicians, a bit of an, an opening, an opportunity for them to, uh, to buy their trade and to to enhance their, their skills and so on. So just to encourage, you know, the arts community overall. Again, our venue is primarily music. So, but it, it's an important part of what we do as well. It's just, we we're not, it, it's it serves more than just to, I mean, and they need that.
Excellent. Thank you, sir.
And to add to that, I would say too, that like school of rock gives them, gives the kids a chance to play on professional stage with professional sound engineers, which is I mean, as much as we offer them at our schools and I'm from one of the schools, uh, it's, it's, it's the next level up. Um, we also have in the past, uh, last year, we donated tickets to Bridges who did a raffle and made thirteen hundred dollars for their, for their program. Um, when Edson was evacuated, we provided our porta potty down at the, uh, at the Mary Reimer. So we, and we were ready to, to bring whatever was needed during that time. So I say that there's some other things that we definitely offer for the town.
Excellent. Thank you. Counsel Taylor?
Um, I'm just trying to understand what the total ask is, cause we council contingency or something gets built for the stage, right? How much is that?
The actual rental cost at the stage is that?
That's to administration. If, if we give out the stage, somebody has to pay for it. I think it's council's, uh, contingency budget that pays for it. So what's the cost of that?
Uh, thank you, Chair, here to counsel Taylor. Excuse me. The cost for the shovel bill, which does include a shit, a stage, but does not include extensions to. The cost for the showmobile, which does include a shit, a stage, but does not include extensions to the stage. Um, and sometimes sound packages, depending on what you need, are additional, but we're looking at, you know, six hundred to eight hundred-ish dollars in that neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
So if I may follow up with that comment, is it administration's intent? Uh, because generally asks do come from the contingency fund, however, this is a. Uh, potentially a possible budgeted amount that wouldn't come from that? Is that, is that the intent of uh, administration when bringing, bringing this forward?
Uh, thank you, I, I would say that the best way to deal with this is actually discuss it at budget. And various options and. Get council's direction at that time.
So if I may, just to make a comment, I, I think for me, uh, uh, I see this as a separate than uh, than our one off. Uh, asks that we get in the community that would be in addition, so it would be the sixty five hundred plus whatever. Amount for it personally, because I see that that contingency could be uh. Definitely drained quite quickly, that, so. Okay. All right, uh, Counsel Taylor?
Just a quick question. Uh. To the presenters, if, if we give you a significant portion of what uh, you're asking for. Uh, what would happen to the tents that you would give us for Canada Day? Would that be complimentary, or would you charge for those?
Well. We've asked for sixty five hundred plus a little goodwill in, in the nature of the uh. Of the uh, the use of the showmobile, uh. I dare say that if you come anywhere near that amount, uh, you will have secured our goodwill. Uh, which means that our tents would be made available, uh, at no charge, it kind of, that comes with volunteers too, to help set them up. Uh.
Perfect.
Thanks.
Do, do, do the best you can.
Yeah. Thank you, Counsel Taylor, any other questions for council for this group? Okay, well, thank you guys again, and it is a great uh, festival, I know that it also, I know our youth advisory, some of our. Uh, rep, uh, youths there, uh, volunteered out there, so gave them an opportunity as well for their bursary, so. Want to thank you for what you do and bringing this event to the community, so thanks for coming.
Thank you so much, thanks for hearing us, appreciate it.
Oh, welcome. Yeah, so counsel, I realize that we have a very full agenda, and I noticed that our staff sergeant is waiting very patiently, but. She is near the end of our agenda, so is there any objections to potentially moving Ms. uh, Staff Sergeant's presentation? To maybe now and then move forward with the rest of our agenda? I should have caught that beforehand, but is there any objections? Counsel Taylor, okay, Counsel Stashik, and that. Okay, so I'm gonna hand it over.
I'm good with that, Trevor.
Okay, and I do apologize, that's my, I, I. Realized it was such a long one, so I'll, I'm gonna hand it over, move into report and to our information item six point one, RCMP quarterly report. I'll hand that over to uh. Staff Sergeant, you're going.
Thank you. So I've made a few notes, um, uh, the one I provided to. Counsel was a report from July, or sorry, January to August twenty twenty three, so it is an eight month. Year or eight months of the year report. And the reason why it's not the quarterly report is because I wanted to kind of showcase where we're at in the year, we have. Um, quite an increase in crime uh, since last year, so we, since last year, we have an eighty percent increase in break and entries, we have. Hundred and twenty six. Percent increase in the theft of motor vehicles, and we have a forty three percent increase of theft under five thousand. Um, I kind of took a look at some of the files and some of the ones that kind of. Uh, jump out at me are, we have quite a few break and entries into RVs where people are looking for homes or somewhere to stay as well as. Sheds at vacant lots. Garage's seem to be getting hit a bit, as well as vacant homes that are uh, not being manned at this time. For theft of motor vehicles, I noted quite a few dirt bike squads. Uh, off highway vehicles being stolen, as well as keys being left in vehicles and vehicles running unattended. Thieves uh, for under five thousand unlocked vehicles are being rummaged through, um, and. Uh, thefts from RVs in parking lots of hotels, unfortunately. So, um, what we've done to kind of uh, curb this increase in crime, we have quite a bit of education to the public about looking up. Uh, locking up valuables and locking doors and other security related items, having a hard time kind of getting this information through media. So I have been going through the town of Hinton for the social media. Uh, I've been working with the hotels to report suspicious people, vehicles, and providing information to their customers about ensuring that things are locked up. A lot of uh, the hotel parking lots where RVs are being, uh, in the parking lots are being hit. As well as working with our courts, so they're aware of this ongoing issue, this is, this is an ongoing thing with property related crimes versus persons crimes. And I just noted from twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three, we've had an increase of seventeen more person crimes, two hundred and fifty two property related crimes. With a total of two hundred and fifty more criminal code offenses in, in the last year. So upcoming, we do have, I know we said manpower. Uh, cap at seventeen FTE, which is full time working members, and that was said in April. I currently have sixteen FTE, and the reason for having one less member is that I have a member slated from Parkland, but he is. They are dealing with critical manpower issues as well, and I'm just waiting for him to get here. I also have three more on transfer in the next month or so. Um, which means I have to wait for them to leave the position before I can uh, advocate to get more members here. So that's caused me a bit of issues and um, I will be looking to supplement with the remaining and. Members at the bigger events in town, as well as looking at some, uh, I basically call it safe city roads. Enhancement shifts for traffic enforcement. So that uh, has to do with the two, the two parts uh, crime related. And then Jordan asked me just to kind of touch base on the uh, the emergency services exercise that we help on August twenty ninth. Uh, quickly go through this, so we had it August twenty ninth at Mountain E coal school. Those uh, those agencies that we had involved were the RCMP, uh, Hinton Fire EMS, Hinton Hospital, as well as Grand Yale Head Public School Division. And we also solicit assistance of Regulate Theater for our actors. So the purpose of this exercise was to enact and supplement, uh, supplemented uh, incident and provide a coordinated response by all the agencies. We're able to test and enhance the level of preparation placed. Uh, test our communication between the agencies and response capabilities of our emergency services here in Hinton. Um, the results, so we will have an after action report come out, we believe in November from Staff Sergeant Murphy, he'll be putting that all together. But uh, we did have a debrief and there was a couple of things, so partnerships between the agencies were found to be a great asset uh, during this event. All agencies relied on their training, but it was important to work out the kinks uh, that the scenario. Drew at us, there was a number of things that were worked out, such as our response, but we also identified some gaps, such as communications. Between the agencies became a big issue. Uh, so the after action report will be prepared, some of it will be kept confidential and others. We will uh, identify the gaps as well as what the solutions are for the gaps. And some information will be released to the public at that time and others will be held in confidentiality. So the report is expected in November. Subject, any questions you may have?
Great, thank you, Staff Sergeant. Counsel, any questions? Uh, Counsel Reese, and then Counsel Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, are you able to um, a, attribute? What is causing this increase in um, criminal code activities?
Through the chair to Counsel Race. Um, I would believe that there's a number of, a number of contributors to the increase in property crime. Uh, I'm gonna go with the easiest one, which is education, uh, I believe here in Hinton. We've had a bit of our guard down and um, the summer has been very busy for the members, we. Uh, have less manpower on the road, which means less proactive patrols are being made. Which means more members are responding to calls and not being able to do our patrols through the neighborhoods. So education for the public is key, uh, more proactive, or sorry, less proactive patrols with members. As well as uh, factors that aren't always within our um. Realm of, so we have increase in drugs, obviously we know that, and drugs, depending on what they're mixed with, uh. It kind of uh, produces the action that we get. Um, so we are working with AHS in regards to the opiate dependency program. Courts are another uh, uphill battle that we've been dealing with, it's very hard to hold somebody on a property related crime. Um, I guess housing prices are not necessarily housing prices, living, living costs will contribute to this because. At times, people resort to. Uh, criminal offenses to get by. So a lot of this is speculation, but I'm gonna take the totality of the situation, I'm gonna say a lot of these factors play.
So, thank you.
Just one, one quick follow up. Would you say the decrease in officers, you know, that you um. Had officers taken away from your complement? You know, has attributed to this?
Through the chair to Counsel Race, I definitely would say, um, I'm not saying it's all, uh. The, the result of having less members, but we end up with less members on the road. Which means less proactive patrols, less traffic enforcement getting done. Um, and when members, when I only have two members on shift and they have to attend the same call together. I have nobody else making patrols, I have uh, my, my uh, service. It decreases because I have no other members responding to other folks. So the service level decreases, I guess what I'm trying to say as well.
Thank you very much, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Reese, Counsel Taylor?
Yeah, two things, if you don't mind. Um, a week ago, we were talking about uh, traffic congestion on Carmichael and Smith, and we heard from the fire chief uh. Safety issues, and he indicated that he didn't have a report from the RCMP on any safety issues that might be on. Carmichael or Smith because of traffic congestion, can you uh, talk to that, please?
Uh, uh, Chief, what was that?
Uh, through the chair to all the co, uh, committee, uh. I didn't have that information at that time, but I will be having that information for committee the next time they see that, I know.
Okay, thanks. Uh, the next question, um. We've recently, or I'm not sure if it's recent, but we have a photo radar site on uh, McKinney and McKetney. And Scobee, which is really close to the Booker Corner. Can you comment on the um, the accident history of the Booker Corner and Highway sixteen?
Uh, through the chair to Counsel Taylor, I would have to review prose, uh, our police operation, uh, data. To get that information, um, it is definitely accessible, I just wouldn't have that information at this time.
But could you, is it possible you can do that? Because this corner, this photo radar site's turning out to be a. A uh, half million dollar a year site. So understanding the safety issues related to that corner is pretty important.
Yes, I'd be able to get that information to uh, Director of Emergency Services, who would then bring it to council.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I have myself and then Counsel Stashik, um, uh, just a quick question, um. At one time, we used to speak about, uh, and that was the Staff Sergeant before you yourself. Uh, a, a tracking system, are we still utilizing that in our community where we, we see where the, where the, the. Crime seems to be happening, that residents can actually go online and see that, is that still happening and? Is, is there a chance, if it is, I see you nodding your head, a chance for education in the community to where they can go and find that information potentially? Because I agree with you, the education is very key, uh, you know, if we're not leaving stuff in our vehicles locked and, and gates open and things like that. It deters, but you know, knowing that that's happening in your neighborhood can really help, but can you speak to that tracking system and, and how they use it? And, yeah, where do they go?
Yes, I can, um, I would have to find out the exact name of the, but it's a crime index.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and it's available to anybody, um, and it's online. I find that I'm having a hard time getting information out into the public because of the, the social media, media. Uh, kind of, um, incident that's been going on, so I will try and get that information out through the town of Hinton. Uh, to, through their social media, because that's, that will be key, is education. Um, to have items removed from vehicles, to make sure vehicles are locked. Um, we also have online reporting, because a lot of times things don't get reported, because they don't think it's important enough, but it. Drives it back to the crime index, because then we will know which areas, we call hotspots, so if we have uh, influx of crime in a certain area. That gets reported to me, and then I can increase proactive patrols in that area. As much as we can, so we do track proactive patrols as much as we can, and we do use that data. So if it's not reported to us, then we don't have that data.
Excellent, okay, thank you. Counsel Stashik. That's. You're okay? Um. I'll put myself in queue, and I guess. And maybe it's more not, it's not for Staff Sergeant, frankly, but, I mean. Uh, to Counsel Taylor's comment about wanting that information and stuff, um. I would see that more as a broader conversation in regards to photo radar, and is that not coming to us? In the near future, talking about the future of and things like that, because. I realize Counsel Taylor wants that information or asking for it, I'm not sure if that's the rest of council. And feel the same way about it, so I guess that's where I'm not sure, you know, uh, is that coming to us in, in future conversation? To Chief DeBo drop?
Uh, through the chair to all committee, uh, that is, there, there uh, is a report coming, we have just completed the RFP for. Uh, forwarding our services, uh, we have con, our replies back. And uh, a full report will be uh, coming to committee in the relatively near future.
Thank you. Okay, uh, anyone else, uh, Counsel Taylor?
Um. Uh, the fire chief trailed off, uh, when he was speaking, I couldn't hear him, could he uh, repeat the last two sentences, please?
Through the chair, absolutely, uh, the uh. Automatic traffic enforcement or photo radar uh, report will be coming to committee in the relatively near future. Uh, full report on the uh, on the RFP that was uh, sent out. And we've got all the results of that RFP back now, we're just compiling it. Compiling the information for a report for committee.
Perfect, thank you. I did have a question, if you.
Uh, yes, Counsel Taylor?
Oh, um. Do these uh. Do these uh, increases in crime from last year? Is that in part because we're coming out of COVID? Or, or like if we compare the crime now to pre-COVID? Is it the same, or does this represent an increase from even that?
Through the chair to Counsel Tay, Taylor, I would have to pull the data from. Previous years, which is available, I would just have to put it together. I believe there's a number of contributors here, and I think, uh, like everybody else's professional, it's a fluid thing. Um, as times change, as new drugs are introduced, our, as our, our lifestyle changes as well as living costs change. That's where we're gonna see the changes, so it may be contributed to COVID, it could be contributed financially. From COVID, mental health, um, health issues. We, you name it, we deal with it, so it, it definitely could be attributed to COVID, but. Uh, there's a number of other factors as well.
Thank you.
And I, I have myself, I just want one more quick question for you, I heard, I guess, a rumor, but is it true, but there's a certain. Period of time where. We do not have officers, they're, they're on call, is that correct?
That's correct.
So. If I may, so, because we, we say we're twenty four seven, but technically we only have people. On the streets twenty one hours, but there's a period of time they're, they're on call, but they're not actually in the office, is that correct?
That's correct, so as of July. We had to go to a non-watch system, and a watch system consists of three separate watches, they're basically three entities. And they work the schedule uh, for twenty four hour coverage, and just to reiterate, there's always twenty four hour coverage, we are always on. On either on shift or on call, which means if you call the police, you're gonna get a police officer. Um but are we always on shift? No, and that is staggered depending on crime, um depending on time of day. Weekday versus weekend. Uh but we try are trying to utilize the amount of members that I have. Um in the most proactive way, I guess. Uh so I guess I use call volume to dictate that. And my call volume is highest, uh I guess after school supper time, everybody's getting home. That is when my call volume is the height, so therefore my members are on shift during that time. Um are we getting the calls late at night? No, but we're also seeing the increase of not. So there is, there's always gonna be that give and take, uh but I believe uh. To have the three watch systems, I need fifteen members total on shift. So I can't have anybody on medical leave, I can't have anybody on, um we call it uh GRW, which is graduated back to work. I can't have anybody on that in order to make that system work, and I don't have that at this.
So if I may follow up then. Is this is a this change, is this something new? And a result of the decision of council a while back and reducing or not? So it's like reducing, but keeping it at seventeen members, or is this something that we've always uh practiced?
Well, at the time in the spring, when we were running at nineteen members in a perfect world. We were actually running at a vote, because we always have those medical pat leaves, and that comes from my nineteen numbers. So although on paper it was nineteen and many eighteen members, we would be running at seventeen or eighteen. The other time, maybe we were running at twenty, but it always kind of worked out. So now that we're at seventeen. The fact that I'm actually running at fifteen, sixteen members actually makes sense, and I can't make a three watch system work with nineteen members. And things are unpredictable in this, sorry, seventeen. It's uh it's unpredictable. I I can't uh say when somebody's gonna be having a baby or go off medical, that sort of thing. So it really. It's a fluid little uh. I don't know, system that I have to work and. As we go along, I'll have to supplement with either um extra shifts for the members to work for traffic enforcement in order to reach our goals. In order to make sure that uh that. The residents in Hinton feel safe.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, counsel, any other?
Uh just one quick follow up, uh there is a link to that uh interactive data map on our on the town's website. It will take you externally to the web, RCMP's website, uh but we do have that link built into our website.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Appreciate that. All right, counsel, any other questions for Staff Sergeant? Your report? All right, well, thank you for your flexibility, counsel, and thank you for waiting. So uh yeah.
Thank you for having me.
That's right. Excellent. Okay, counsel, um. Tell you what, let's take a five minute break, and then we will reconvene with our reports from administration after five minutes.